Recording, so we're just stop talking.
All right, it is seven o'clock and let's go, we go meeting to order. First, there are business of the pledge.
I would consider that you had to say something. From what stands, one nation. And so what are the.
The consent agenda, the minutes in the bills, there is an additional.
Make a motion for consent agenda with additional bills.
Okay, I have a more than a second, any questions? All those in favor?
I, I, I.
Support more than curious. Public comments. Okay, anyone who is here to comment on something that's not on the agenda? This now is your time. Okay, we will accept comments during the agenda items as we. Speak on like this, or something like that, you can mention, raise your hand at that time. Okay, hearing no comments, we will move on. We're. Presenting the oath of office to Village Marshal, Colin Stone.
Could you please raise your right hand and repeat?
I, Colin, having been elected or appointed to the office of deputy marshal, but have not yet entered upon the duties thereof, swear that I will support the constitution of the United States and the constitution of the state of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability, so help me God.
It's me. So I signed on. So you don't have to sign.
Are you?
What's up?
You're the official.
Yes.
Chris is going to be.
Oh, okay.
He has.
I'm supposed to move out.
Formality going on. All right, congratulations. All right, we have. Next, we have report on operation by village. If anyone remembers, we, this is the anniversary of when we were going to bend the curve in fifteen days. Started today, including those three years ago. Also, for the board, the. Last day to register for the mid-marine dinner meeting being held in Sackville will be tomorrow. If anyone that wants to go, can that make sure and let Michelle know about it. All right, we were going to pass up the administrator at this point, he's still on his way back from West Bend. And go to Bill Marshall.
Thank you. Marshal Dable sent to the regrets, he's just two days off of his shoulder surgery, and then he's been putting off for a while now, so he's still in the recovery process, so he wasn't able to attend. Also, I want to thank you for the warm welcome that you gave Colin. Colin, I work with Colin down for Washington, I've worked with him. He's relatively new to us down in Fort Washington, he's worked down there for two years now, but he brought with him a breadth of real world experience and he's already shown remarkable level of maturity and. And just. What we like to see in police officers, he impressed both myself and. And Marshal Dable, and we knew fairly early that we needed to get him up here as soon as we could. So thank you for the warm welcome. As far as Marshal Davis reports, just some significant events from, events from February, the speed signs he ordered are in. He's waiting for it to get a little warmer. Winters in Wisconsin are hard on electronic and other equipment, and he'd like, like at least to get us past the winter period and into the spring before it gets those signs up. On March eighth, Marshal Dable and myself attended a Lions Club meeting down at the fire department, where I gave a presentation as far as our donation drive to acquire some automatic ventilators for the slots. The feedback we've been getting on that meeting is that it went very well. I've also reached out to several legacy corporations in Prudential and. We're attempting to solicit some funds through that regard. And I'd like to again thank Mr. Pave and his wife, they're organizing the fundraiser for us, it's happening April first. It's gonna be a broad crime and everyone loves brass. And I think some other vacancies and other things as well. As far as the report, I think it's pretty much average, our hours, the average for patrol last week were. I'm sorry, for the month of February, were seventy-eight. Our average in twenty twenty-two was sixty-one. Plates of same were on track for both and. No equip, no equipment issues reported other than the A D, which we're still working on for part of this time. Any questions?
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move to the first case report.
Evening. You have my report in your packet. Few notes there, the fire training report, we had a lot of sheriffs come up, sheriff department come up and do a crime scene preservation. Training for us, that was joint practice with Wabika and Belgium as well. EMS training was weapons and that construction training, which is mandatory course for all of our E M Ts. Now presented by Aurora, that was a also joint practice between Prudential and Belgium that we have the same. Fire engineer training, we had joint practice with Wabika Belgium again, and that was a forceful entry. And there's some pictures there of our members working with a group of fire professionals called Rose City Pool. They put on a training up here, necessary to travel around, sell people in Wisconsin, putting on training. But people that are full-time, that just love the fire service and they do a lot of training, they have these props that are made when we can. Fry and nap and sort of get a, get a real feel for how it is to break down doors and stuff. Get in, and then the duty service there, we had a few of our E M Ts that are CPR instructors. They taught CPR and certified for family dental employees. And here, and along with some temporary residents as well. All volumes, pretty stable, matching right along with what we did in twenty twenty-two right now, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary. One call up on rescue calls, one call down on ambulance calls, so nothing, nothing to really worry about there, we're doing well, so. The other thing that I will announce now and will do a presentation at a later date, our Prudential Fire Association to their fundraising part of our fire department, that's a separate group, had. Approved four dollars for the A D for the week, oh, I left, Martin, we sent it. Four dollar donation, we'll get that to them next month. I don't have any questions.
The.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, we can talk about now, but we're kind of holding off until we do the agreement, but we continue to have meetings. And we're moving towards, we're meeting with the Ozaki County Public Safety next week, Tuesday. We have on their agenda to ask for some funds for startup. And then also clarify about the extra money that we were asking for with the extra hundred thousand dollars we're partnering with all municipalities up here. We were, had a meeting, everything sounds really good and we're forward, we get to these couple of dates up to the public safety, get on the county board, get that figured out and figured out. And then I think we're ready to post that in first, right? And so we'll move forward, kind of excited, it's finally happening.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. We will now return to administrator's report.
Or thank you. Um, let's see, you guys probably read through my reports, I wasn't worried with too much. Big thing is that we didn't finish up the annual audit, when we last met, we were in the middle of it, and that got completed, and we look forward to hearing the results. We've been doing a lot of work with election prep, we got absentee ballots out. Michelle did her pre-test today and everything went well, so we're looking forward to that. We keep working on the mud run event, that's still kind of in the late brainstorming, starting to become a reality kind of phase, so that's exciting. We celebrated rising construction and exploration and the February business of the month, they're very humbled and excited about that. A lot of work with the joint ALS paramedic level service, which again, we'll get into a little bit later in this meeting, but work does end up till three o'clock today, which I'll share with you a little bit. Director Paulus has been investigating a lot of stuff when it comes to our D P W operations, which she'll share with you a little bit later too. Him and I did meet with the county on the B I L S D P local grants, since this is part of the bipartisan infrastructure law dollars from the federal government. They are doing a grant that is made for smaller local municipalities, the eighty twenty split grant, and it's very competitive, as you can imagine, because everybody wants that money. So we met with the Ozaki Highway Department Director to go through an application, drafted a early draft with him, we then kept revitalizing that. Added pictures, finished up the description just today, and we'll be finalizing that for submission next week. So once that gets submitted, we're probably not going to know for a few months, but please cross a finger, say a prayer, whatever you want to do, it'll be very exciting if you can get those dollars. And then finally, we gave the green light to Dollar General, anybody who's driven down here, you'll see that they've already started work with demoing and getting up and running, and they have a very aggressive timeline to get built, so it's very exciting community too. And then I'll just add that we have the same kind of monthly breakdown, I'll give you every month. Nothing too exciting of note, but I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has.
It's Dollar General's. Estimate estimate for.
It's in May, right? Yeah, major. Yeah, want to get up? That's what I said.
Got to figure out who's doing that building.
Fire this year.
All right, right?
This year.
Yeah, Tony, Tony demoed, they're knowing.
Those buildings are usually somewhat free cab. Sectionized, it's all done. They come and put it together. Take longer to plant the grass around the place.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. So Public Works, we just wrote a treatment plan out.
Put a little info in there that's in your packet with the well to leak. The water main break on Highland. And also the heavy rain we had on Monday, I think it was the twenty-sixth of February, which. Almost three, four times our normal flow at the plant. Questions on any of that, and outside of that, the new Public Works employee is here, Jason Lox. If anyone wants to see or meet him, I'm sure you guys have seen him around town.
Welcome.
There's one thing I want to stress. As far as the, the floor rate at the treatment plant, that's something that I hope the board keeps in mind in the future to. Work on laterals and plate pipes and things of that nature, every time I do a complete rebuild on the street. Because that's where all of this extra water came from, fortunately, we did not have an overflow or a bypass, which is all kinds of red tape. We're lucky this time, but we're not always lucky, so. We can keep that in mind. Right, you have anything else? Any question?
I speak a little bit more on the SCADA system. As you mentioned in your report. About upgrading the SCADA system. Sure, as well, the SCADA system is like the brains of the plant, so it, it's basically communicating what's happening at the plant onto the computer and if. If the operator down there, which is Mike, is setting something to turn on and off at this time, if the SCADA goes down, there is no such thing, it's all. We don't know if anything turns on, we don't know if anything turns off unless going out there and physically seeing it. We had two incidents in the last month where the SCADA has froze up. We were able to, energetics on both, right? Was able to reboot it. But there's going to be a time, it seems sooner than later now that we're going to get the black screen of death. And we're done. So mainly we have no alarms there, we will not know if anything happens.
Oh, the set system.
Jason was still here when we got it, so that was.
Joe, do you remember when we approved that seventy-five thousand, I think is what it was for.
Yeah, Joe.
For implementing that. It's like ten, twelve years ago or something.
Yeah, I believe it was at all nine and the average life is ten years.
John would, yeah, he would have paper.
It's operating on Windows seven. So Windows seven is not supported, so if something would happen with that, we'd, we'd lose it.
More than something that we're going to have to. Are you thinking of replacing that this year? At some point?
Um.
Or getting into next year?
I would really like to push it into next year, but if it crashes, I have to have someone at that plant twenty-four seven.
Well, that'd take a hard. And any other?
Was that Bill? Which it ties into a lot of new computer system, it's updating everything in there, I'd put a new dialer in, right now we have the one dialer which is on phone line. So if someone would take out the box, I'd lose the dialer, so they would go to a cellular. There's, next month I'll have something together that would have what it all entails and how it breaks down and talks.
Would you suggest replacing that old generator with one that's up to date also?
Well, that was going to be next month, but. So we had a power outage last Friday, then we're out for six hours. And over the years of upgrading the plant and adding things that generator cannot supply the whole plant. So only half the plant runs. So then again, I have to have someone down there to monitor, to shut pumps off and turn different ones on. So we were maxed out with that generator. And on that note, because everything was out, we don't have backup power to any of the wells besides one portable. So. There's a certain point where once I get down in water pressure that I have to put out a boil notice. Hopefully don't get that fire, don't drink the water, I put the fire department, no, I can't supply them with water. So it becomes a big thing once you lose water.
Have you priced any of that stuff, that generator?
I figured the, the one at the plant right now is a hundred and fifty K W. I'd probably be looking at double the size of three hundred. For the wells, I, I'd have to find out, the one we have is a one fifty, the portable, right? And that's able to power the wells. So. But then you get it. Yep, then we have to go back and forth.
So you're going to work on those numbers in the future, in the coming couple of weeks or?
Mike has talked to superpower when they're down there adding the phosphorus and analyzer to upsize that generator. It's small enough, surprisingly, that'll fit through a door to get it out, but to put a new one in, I, I don't know if you'd have to knock wall down or put it outside.
I think we would build a place to, to put that.
So.
We might be able to use that space inside.
So I mean, thank goodness it worked, it switched, it transferred, but half the stuff wasn't working and ventilation system is still, still down. And so something with that knocked out the ventilation system.
Well, that generator is new, it's a plant, so that's nineteen eighty, something like that? Eighty-three, yeah, totally. All right. So for those numbers coming down the line. Any other questions? All right, thank you, next we have. Village clerk's report.
Nothing to add to it.
All right, any questions to the clerk? Those treasurer.
Well, I have anything to add to other than my reading, but the treasurer in Baltimore was very, very good. I anticipated it was about longer than two, it's just four hours. It was out of her holes and she was going for me, and for her, a great person for me to reach out to me now that I haven't had to. Figure out what question is asked. But it was a very great thing for me to reach out to her and I would.
So we will have. And we'll, we'll, we'll be getting to that. Your training as we go through the action. Any questions to the clerk? All right, now we'll move to County Supervisor District two report.
Yeah, so big thing is, is ARPA funds, for those who aren't familiar with the ARPA funds, those are COVID money. That the county got, county got seventeen point three million. They allocated five and a half million to fire and EMS services and now, and a couple other projects, like a shed down at the police department, that they're going to build, which is one point three million, and now we're down to about eight and a half million dollars, it has to be spent. They're looking at putting four and a half million dollars in for, right now proposed for Lasada, building another Lasada. So that's something we're looking into, so that's going to be a big thing here, but the next upcoming months is trying to figure out what's eight million dollars is going to go, so. I will continue to keep everyone posted on that, but that's currently where we're at.
All right, any questions?
I have a question for you, trust me, yes, I saw in the news and through the grapevine about some sort of revolving loan fund through the county.
Yes.
You know, is that in serious talks there?
That's, that's very serious talks, yes. Yep.
From an administrative standpoint, I'd definitely be in support of that.
Is that to replace the state revolving fund that we had?
They've always had it, the only Ozaki Economic Development had had it, but it's not a program that a lot of. Businesses or communities have even taken advantage of, so now they're trying to reboot that program, trying to get that more out there so that more either businesses can utilize it, give them funds to upstart their business or working capital or purchase equipment, so it's always been around, but.
Basically the plug on that on this about five years ago, and we had it taken ours on ourselves and wondered, so we're redoing that on our own.
Right, this program.
Without stated involved.
Right, exactly, I didn't know, this program's been around for a while and now, right now, they're talking about using some of that, we had a record high. Sales tax, I think it was like eleven point one million is what we ended the year, so they're looking at using some of that to give back, well, which makes sense, I mean, the business is bringing the sales tax, let's use the sales tax to help other businesses. Come to an area or develop or, so yeah, I, I am full supportive as well, I think it's a smart idea to kind of invest in our own communities and keep that going and help companies kind of. Be more attracted to Ozaki County and hopefully the northern end, well, Ozaki County is the goal, but. Yeah, I think it's a great thing too, is I fully support it.
With that, that would have to fall under infrastructure also. Then, or is that?
Nope, it's a separate, it's a completely separate program, it's like I said, it's run by Ozaki Economic Development, O E D, and then they have, I believe they have. A bank that they work with that will look at each loan and then approve it, process it, and then they work out the paperwork with the details are and interest payments and all that.
Yeah, if it's similar to how Washington County operates theirs, it's based off of jobs, so they, you're allowed a certain amount of money based on the amount of full-time jobs you create. You have to create those jobs or you're going to be eligible for the long-term funding. So it's pretty, pretty neat and consolidation.
Yeah, it sounds like there were just three of those steel. Just be with our money and we'll be controlling it rather than the state, that's a good idea. Anything else? Any questions as a supervisor? No, okay, we'll move on to items for discussion and, and or action. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve wastewater. Water wastewater testing lab setup proposal.
So I have a question on this, I think this is a good thing, but just a couple of things that stuck out to me on this, so it looks like we're, it's going to take thirty-six thousand dollars to get this started and we're guaranteed, it looks like from what you're saying here, about twenty-nine, right around there. So then we're hoping for a potential thirty-one, so it seems like we're really kind of pushing out there and hoping we'll get this thirty-one thousand that'll come in and it makes us look real attractive, but actually for the startup cost, it's going to cost more to get this going than what we're actually going to bring in upfront. So we anticipate that we're going to get a return, how long is it going to take to get a return on that initial investment, I guess?
On the sewer side, averages between three and four years, they said the water depended on how much you test would be another three to five. Where I ran it in Kiwasko, the water side, I had two years that I'd have that paid for.
Okay, and where are we looking at, so at this, if this annual, what we're looking at bringing in, where is that going to be put towards and what do, I guess, what are we going to use those funds for, is that going to go back into?
I would like it to, it would almost be like an equipment replacement, so the lab would be like a self-sufficient self-funding. Entity that if something would go out, so one of the upfront costs I don't have on here is the incubator, which there's still one at the plant that works to replace that, it's nine grand. So it'd be something like that where I wouldn't have to come to the board and ask for, you know, five thousand for this or that, that that would be in there. I would ask though that the board or on the annual budget would be whatever the cost is for supplies that would come from the general fund, that this lab can be self-sufficient, so.
Okay.
So in case it didn't make sense, we would have a separate fund that's set up for the lab operation, just like you have a fire fund and everything else. All the expenses and income would stay within that fund, unless it gets, once the income is so high above a certain amount to replace those kind of things, then it can help to benefit the general.
So, so last question I have, so for this, what we're looking at potential, I mean, do we got to advertise this, do we send this surrounding community, or what was kind of the thought process on?
Well, right now, I currently take care of Gibbsville's and Onion Rivers lab. And all we do is we send it out, so. And all we do is we send it out, so now that it come here.
Oh, okay.
Uh I did not put it in for on the water side. Uh egg source has been the lab, they are in Marshfield, right? And for when we do our fecal testing in the summer. We have a six hour hold time. So from when we take the sample to when it has to be tested, has to be in six hours. Everyone around here has been failing it because they can't test it in time. So. My uh if everything goes through, the plan is, and I've already been in talks when I was in Kiwasco with Cedar Grove. Buschburg, Belgium to do the work.
So I like the idea that we put this impact of the ARPA dollars, I know this is gonna come up later in this discussion in this meeting, but how much do we currently have? Even with the splash pad currently right now figured into using ARPA funds, how much do we have left? Sixty-eight thousand, right around there. So this is about a little over half. Yeah, I think it would make sense. I mean, it's something like, let's keep generating revenue, it seems like this is a smart move.
Well, even if you would take out uh Onion River and Gibbsville, Fredonia alone, you wouldn't be spending that out. So if you're saving the ten thousand dollars that I have down for Fredonia a year. Three and a half years you would have the equipment paid for. Uh one of the benefits and one of the things that I like and I think the guys will like is. We tested right now, I have the result right now, I'm not waiting two weeks for it. So. With that high flow we had at the end of February, our phosphorus numbers went through the roof. On the end of that is what the pounds we are sending out to the river is what we pay to the county, that's our penalty. Well, it was pretty high. If we test that right now and I see it's high, I can test it tomorrow. I can wait for the right time and test it not, if we have to test it here because you're coming to get the sample. So it's a benefit to the village and for us that. Or we have a big snow event and Mike can't get down there, we're busy. We don't have to hurry up and get there to test it, we can test it when we're done.
Yeah, I think this is a no brainer, I think this is a smart, I think this is a no brainer, so I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve this using the thirty six thousand for startup from ARPA funds.
I'll say that, just a couple of questions here, but um. Am I missing out here? What are the cost savings for us? Not setting her.
The ten thousand.
And then. Can we use these funds to offset some of the uh struggles that we have? Um balancing on the wastewater size.
Some of the income.
Some of the income for that, it would make sense to kind of try to keep the cost low and. Passed on costs down to the residents more.
Yeah.
It would be within the sewer budget. Whether it's in a reserve fund or or. Well, we would next those two, but it would be within, the water would be.
That's why I'm asking.
So the, so the, so the way we would handle that, like, for example, in the budget that you passed, you took some of the general fund dollars, right, to offset. Those utilities that were, that were negative without that money, so the revenues that were, would be derived and go towards the general fund. Which is, which would be instead of it moving to the, I'm sorry, moving to the utilities that are in the black. If that makes sense. In my mind, you know, it'd be a little bit of. Uh shell, shell game, but, but yes, we, in line, short answer that yes, it can help benefit. You know, the negatives that we have in those funds.
Yeah, the PSC is usually pretty fussy about. Revenues that come in as a result of operations in the water department. Not going to do this over here, that way they should go and stay in that. So I'm, I'm sure that, that we can make that work.
The freshwater, do you, yeah, I mean, like drinking water tests, I mean, could you, so now people in Fredonia are a wobbler. That have their own weapons and stuff, they can come to even step forward, correct?
Correct, and that is something that I didn't even put in here, but with Chris on.
Talked about that.
Helping on the town side, that that can go out there.
Okay, anything else on that? I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Next we have. Motion to approve lawnmower attachment purchase proposal.
So the way I'm reading into this. This was budgeted for a C, in the CIP budget. For twelve grand and. After your research, it looks like it's gonna be more cost effective to actually replace the mower than it would be to.
Yeah, so the attachments that were earmarked for a different lawnmower, which was bigger and more money. And. We could put the same attachment just for the different lawnmower on a new lawnmower. And still be under what was budgeted for that attachment. And to replace the mower that. Paperweight right now.
You gonna sell that?
Uh I think I'll put it on auction, it's just there's a long list of what doesn't work.
You gonna donate it? You have no refunds?
So.
So you're, so your recommendation then is to go with this Kubota Z four twenty, but it looks like we're gonna get two weed whackers. So remember that.
Yeah, the one, one we have there, or the last one that was purchased was ten years ago. So I'd like to uh. Get some weed eating done in the village with ones that. Keep running in the weeds. So, and to replace, I mean, I obviously if you guys have worked on these, the. Carburators go out with the fuel we have in Ozaki County and to replace a carburetor is a hundred and sixty dollars. And you can get a new weed eater for three hundred, so.
So even with. The new or that has the attachments, plus two we, there's still, I'm there about four hundred on the. Things kind of straight forward.
Do I operate on propane or?
No. This one is gas.
Okay, we're going towards propane, the ventracks are. Propane, correct?
One ventrak and the X.
No. They're quality, then tracking, one's on tracking, one and our Ferris is zero turn, this propane. The other two are gas and then our other ventrak is diesel.
And this one would be gas, and this is a zero turn, so.
So when they're empty, do we track them up to the. Mobile station or whatever and fill them up? Or do we carry cans?
The gas or? Uh gas, we have cans at the shop, but these can go all day.
Uh huh. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve a lawnmower attachment, it's not to exceed eleven thousand six hundred fifteen dollars.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion? All the question, all those in favor? More than curious. All right, next we have, uh more to approve wastewater search tank inspection proposal.
So Roger had, this was supposed to be done last year, uh I think with Roger leaving, it was dropped. Uh the recommended. Inspection is twenty years. Uh we're on year twenty-six. Uh the farther we go, the stuff that's inside, your tear rates and falls apart. So they would inspect both tanks for that price there.
Are those glass line?
Yes. And that is why.
This budgeted or?
I don't know if Roger had that somewhere, I, I'm not sure. Uh I guess this, so this would have to be done after we emptied the tanks in the fall. So, cause obviously they gotta get in there when it's empty. And we have a short window on that, because otherwise Mike's filling it back up. Uh I can push it off till next year, but then it's actually another year and a half, I mean. I'd hate to have them come through and say, your glass is cracking or it's chipped because this was wrong. But.
A lot of stuff.
And wrong, right? Any recommendation on how we would have paid for this?
I assume from some sort of maintenance line and likely it's a small enough item that, you know, you could approve it and then. When we, when we're sitting here in fall, we really don't have four thousand dollars. We may, we have other problems going on, and I would be upfront with you about that, but. Generally, yes, you'd be approved, we got that a maintenance.
This qualifies equipment replacement?
No, it'd be more maintenance.
What's gonna cost a whole lot more if we don't uh, if we report something maybe?
Just gotta quit looking around.
Make a motion for wastewater search tank inspection proposal.
Real quick question, just real quick, I know I said they'd hold this for three days, but we're talking about not doing this to the fall, if we accept this, this price will still be good.
Yeah, you said he'd hold it.
Okay, thank you.
So that'll be our forty-six, forty-six hundred.
Correct, hopefully we don't need the seven hundred, hopefully we save it in time that. They just do what they need to do for maintenance wise and we're good. But he said not being in there in twenty-six years, he doesn't know what it looks like.
All right, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. That was a match speed thirty, forty-six hundred. Okay, um all those in favor?
I.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, permission to bid contract twenty twenty-three dash one for a forty-eight inch storm sewer. Inspection and cover relighting at South Milwaukee Street and Wheeler Avenue Interstate.
Is this the covert that's needs a seventy-five thousand dollar repair?
Yeah, so you guys budgeted your CIP uh to do a covert replacement project. Um after initial inspections, and we get some contractors come out, it might be a possibility that you can just reline the system. So, so really what this, what we'll be collecting from these bids is two, two. One, can you do a visual inspection through the CCTV line and then just reline it? Or does it need to be completely reconstructed?
And we said, we said I had seventy-five thousand right from ARPA funds to do this.
Not ARPA, I didn't see it. Cash on hand, yep. So this is just the permission to bid, and then we would go out to bid and come back to you guys in either late April or beginning of May. With the results in that bid.
Yeah, I've seen pictures of it, it's pretty bad, so I guess I'd make a motion, uh put it out for bid for twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Yeah, if you could reline that instead of putting no code in.
That would be.
Eventually that street is gonna come up on the street. Plan, and we're actually gonna do it instead of pushing it ahead like we've done for the last thirty years. So we can do, we can really fix it and put in whatever it needs when we get to that point. We can reline it now, that would be the thing to do now.
So. The comments I'm gonna make on this year, I have. I had four contractors look at it, two will not bid on it. Uh one has gave me a proposal to line it and one has complete replacement of tearing it up. Uh the low right now is one twenty-three, high right now is one forty-eight. And the one forty-eight was lining it.
Which is why we're gonna go out to public bid to see what all of our options are. And then we'll. We'll see what we get.
So again, we're just looking for permission to bid, not necessarily.
Yeah, you're not accepting anything yet.
We can always refuse any at all.
Bid contract twenty-one, but here that's one.
We do have a motion in a second.
Yes.
Okay.
Keep up guys.
There you go. Um all right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I, all those for. Motion carried. Next we have motion to approve digital proposal to migrate to exchange online from the county.
That's because the county shut the stone.
Correct.
The county is moving to digital court itself. We'll once again be served like a team. Other than those county, which is always handy.
This is the only option we have.
Uh you could wait. The, I mean, the county's gonna be ending the service at the end of this year. Um the way the digital corp, because they're helping out other communities too, is that they won't want invoice us until the twenty twenty-four cycle, so we'll start here. Or they'll start this year to get us all set up. And then they'll be invoicing us for the twenty twenty-four cycle, more predictably by the fourth. We're going through it, the county's going through it, other moustaches are going through it, so. Um and it, and it's not just email, I learned a lot going through this process, so the county really does all of your hosting services for your office suite of products and everything else like that. So we added in additional um memberships, so to speak, to cover things like the plant, right, where their stuff hasn't been updated since. Windows seven. Um so that's why we're incorporating all of those accounts, that everybody gets updated at the same time, and then we have a dedicated contractor. To answer any questions.
Listen, none of this.
Um I don't, not this exact service. This issue. So the email hosting piece, sure. Uh but i- in, when I talk to.
And we needed that, Joe.
Well, when I talked to Steve at the county. Their entire email system is tied to the office suite of products, so that's, that's the issue, is that we, we can easily go get a business Outlook account. That's not the part that's expensive here, it's, it's the having the full suite of products. Um for everybody and tied to their membership, and then your email is tied to that, that's, that's increasing the cost.
Can we pay their phone for our current service? That adds up in a year.
What's that?
December twenty-five.
Correct. Yeah.
Yep, sounds like I know where the county can use those ARPA funds.
Yeah, I know, I was, I was thinking too.
Uh so Chris, did you say that this would be billed in twenty twenty-four?
That's what they told me. Which I was questioning a little bit too. We'd have it anyways. Well, the nine, ten a month. Yeah, yeah.
Would you, Chris, would you mind? Talking to them and getting clarification on that before we do anything?
We got the time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I just feel like before we say, yeah, go ahead and do it, if we can, you know, budget for this in twenty twenty-four, that'd be outstanding, right?
Would you like this to return to a future board meeting?
Yes, we'd be okay with that.
Okay.
Any other questions that I should ask about their service, because that'd be a good time to do it.
Right.
Well, ideally we would be starting it ASAP and then not getting invoiced until twenty twenty four. That's what they understand municipalities are kind of stuck. Yes, I was questioning that too.
What, when would you be ready to bring all the information?
Next meeting.
So I entertain a motion to delay until the next meeting.
This, we per thought, I mean. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense that we're not paying the family now. For services, we wait until we have to upgrade before we send it.
Yep, right.
All right, so I need a motion to uh, postpone until the next board meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? All right, next you have motion to approve the revised, revised, revised final inter municipal. Agreement by the villages and towns of Belgium and Fredonia for ALS paramedic level services.
But this might be helpful, if I go through it quick with you to so you know what was changed. So you guys did approve it.
They get it on the floor first.
What's that?
Can I get this on the, on the floor first?
This is approved?
Yeah, he's waiting for me.
I'll make a motion.
Second now.
Okay, motion in a second, discussion.
Sure, so like I said, the village board, you guys have approved the original document. You guys are actually the first of the four municipalities to approve it. It then went to the town of Fredonia, the town of Fredonia added language that you can find on. Uh, page three regards to the budget. And the distribution of costs, so originally the cost annually was gonna be broken down just purely by population. The town thought it'd be more equitable to do it based off of a three-pronged approach, population. Um, the call volume of the previous year and equalized value of improvements. So they added those three, uh, we quickly chatted with Don and uh the other um village president and chair and said, yep, that sounded good. Um, so those were added into the agreement. Um, and it was approved by the town contingent on adding those items. Then we went, I'm sorry, then it went to the town of Belgium and they approved it as is. And then it went to the village of Belgium, uh, just this past week. And they added a lot of edits, most of which are minor that you can see highlighted in purple here. But I'll go through some of the, the bigger items that they had added. Um, and I'll say that the chief and I are in agreement with these edits, so it's nothing too, too alarming. Um, the first one again is back at, at G. It emphasized that Ozaki County is gonna be funding this for two thousand or twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four, I'm sorry, twenty twenty five. And then the municipalities, when you start funding it for whatever portion um is theirs. The next change was when it came to. Uh, when it came to the budget as a whole on item two under the budget. You'll see that shall not exceed a five percent increase. So if whatever reason the annual budget does change by five percent. Then it needs to be approved by all the municipalities, they need to be okay with that increase that they're getting. Um, so a good example would be, let's say the program keeps growing, it's wildly successful, we decide that we need to hire another paramedic. Well, that might push the budget over five percent, so that would need to get approved by each of the governing, governing lines. Sure, yeah. Um, next change was under three, under the capital improvement uh list. Instead of having the capital improvement list be annual, it would be a five-year uh plan. Uh, and a ten-year capital improvement list, so that way the municipalities can better, better prepare in their budgets for those costs when they come up. And just one more big change. Never mind, maybe there's not, maybe I missed chief.
Had only them when we came for paramedic level calls. And we backed them up and explained that we are doing this for all the US callers, or anytime the ambulance goes out. They, they weren't anticipating having cases of paramedic.
So now this new agreement, the newest version, it's just been the village of Belgium. So, so they just approved it last night, you would be the second and then it'll go back to the towns for their approval.
And this piece of it is, is necessary for us to get our sustainability plan in the county's hands. Um, by the first weekend.
So are there any questions on any of the changes?
And then one more thing, um, our, our sustainability plan would be plan A. Asking the county to fund this fully, maybe, right? And we'll cross our fingers on that, and if they don't in twenty twenty six, then this would be plan B then.
Or even if they only contribute a portion of the dollars, right, we know how we cover the rest.
All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, I have a motion in a second. I will call a question, all those in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, um, discussion and possible action relating to ARPA dollars from. To really allocating ARPA dollars from splash pad to the TID three district. To be used for road and utilities. This action is requested by trustee P.
It's that, right? No, I, uh, you know, just to be clear, I, I, I might talk at this about putting it on the agenda. I said for anything and, you know, like, you know, to go back. Our project on that road and infrastructure and everything like that is gonna cost great deal of money. Um, when we do that in that area, but, I mean, we just went through thousands of dollars of dollars with that stuff that. We should focus on more.
Sure. Um, so what you have before you is, is just a high-level summary of some of the information that I've gleaned thus far. From our engineer, uh, Isaac, he talks about estimated engineering costs of twenty five thousand. And uh, he talks a little bit about uh regular maintenance. He talks about adding a deep fluorination system. Um, he also talks about a bidding, bidding process costing about fifteen thousand. In case those numbers scare you, I think there are ways that we could save money, we could easily go through a bidding process in-house, that's why you have staff. Um, so I think that could save the fifteen K right there. Um, I would tie the engineering, I wouldn't do that with strand, I would tie it to whichever contractor you guys would pick for doing this splash pad. They can easily do the design work as part of um their contract. Um, the question was asked about allocating ARPA funds to, to a TID. Um, you'll see a response from Todd, who is your rep with Ellers. Uh, he said that, that would be possible, that that would be an okay thing to do. Um, on the back page, you'll see a rough sketch picture of. If we did this conceptual plan at Stony, Stony Creek, what do it look like, what the location would be? He has an estimated cost in the bottom right corner. Uh, he estimates it's being roughly about two hundred fifty thousand dollars to construct. Um, on the final page, you'll see some comments. Um, director Paulus visited uh village of Belgium. Uh, and learned more about their operation with the splash pads, you see some of the feedback that they gave you, uh, gave there as well. I, I was just gonna say that in, in the end, tonight, there's really no action, I would just say for you guys. I, for us as staff, we really just wanna know what's your priority, right? Uh, we don't need to get it all to the nitty gritty details about the splash pad, we figured that out as we go, go forward. Really, I just wanna know if this is a project that you guys are passionate about and support. And do you have a timeline for it, right? We don't need to necessarily allocate a hundred K today to a certain project, right? I just need to know if this is something you guys generally support.
Just the backstory, right, for everyone that's here, just so they understand, I think we gotta start from the beginning. So we got what, two hundred and sixty five thousand dollars of ARPA funds total is what we got? So we talked about it for a long time, where did we wanna put that money? Do, do you wanna do a water main project, do we wanna do a road? And then we looked at doing Washington Avenue over here off of Wilson Street, but it didn't even cover a third. Of that cost, and so we're like, okay, well, if we're getting these ARPA funds and we feel like they should go to benefit. Get something nice at the residence of Fredonia can enjoy. So the splash pad was an estimate of like a hundred and ninety three thousand dollars, right? Is that right, right, or was that mid we got? So we said we put a hundred thousand dollars towards, it's not adding, and I know there's stuff on Facebook, it's not an extra tax. This is already money we had, it's not gonna go on anyone's taxes. We were gonna put a hundred thousand dollars towards that, we dedicated forty four thousand dollars to a truck and some other projects here, now we're down to. Sixty eight thousand dollars roughly left, so we were gonna dedicate a hundred thousand, have the community raise the rest of the money. The fund the splash pad, we thought was fair, and if we can't get the funding for it, we're gonna put that hundred thousand dollars towards. Something else at that time was what we discussed, if I remember correctly. So that's just the whole history and the backstory of how we got here today. So we looked at road project, we looked at water main projects, we, we looked at everything we could think of. And we couldn't come up to an agreement, the best idea we had that came forward out of even committee levels was buying a truck. For public works, and that was, which I think was a graded idea, and I'm glad we had the funds to do that, but that's where we're at. So I mean, in terms of allocating this money, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, that sounds great, but in terms of road private, that road of industrial parks and costs, what, four point one million dollars? It doesn't make any sense, I say we keep pushing forward the splash pack, and I think the residents of, I mean, this is money that we don't have to get it from anywhere else. And we'd never budget it any other year to do something, so I think we go ahead and do something nice, and I think we continue forward with the splash pad, because the TID district, we can. Charge out for that, I mean, it's in a TID, we're gonna use the TID to our advantage. So a hundred thousand dollars enough is dropping a bucket, we can do something nice. In a park, but it seems like there's a lot of good response from the community that they support. So I say we leave it with splash pad in my opinion, and then try and raise the other half of the funds through the community.
Which is gonna be like two hundred thousand dollars.
No, it was a hundred. Yep, that's, yeah, if you're gonna be doing that size of splash pad.
So, so we should start this project. With the hundred thousand dollars. And then where does the other money come from?
That's what.
Complete it, or how do you raise it?
There would be seed money, basically. The, I was supposed to this. At first, because I had all the, a lot of the projects you mentioned, we could use it for this and that, and because we were behind on some things. But two things, the purpose of a TIF is that you can amortize the cost of your startups and infrastructure and whatever. Over the lifetime of a TIF, making it manageable for payments. And secondly. The, the splash pad is not anything that I would foresee we could levy taxes for and do. I mean, for a village this size. Um, that would be uh, quite an expenditure to take out of the budget. When you figure you should do a road project each year, you should get a vehicle each year, you should. Um, there's things that, that you have to pay for every year, which consume all but maybe forty thousand dollars with the budget. And that's all the little things and whatever. So, why not, the, the, the government. Paying this money in front of our nose, it's just free money, this is yours, you tell us what you're gonna use it on, and we can do that. That is the only opportunity I can foresee that we can do something. Which is a want more than a need, but would really pay up. For the kids and grownups and men, whoever wants to have something really kind of modern and new and village style. Um, I, I became a supporter of this and I, I still am a supporter of it, so I. I think that would be the best use of the ARPA funds. To give the community something that it wouldn't ordinarily be able to do for the citizen. Yes.
If there are different options for what kind of splash pad, like the splash pad in Belgium. Is vastly different than the splash pad in Jackson, they're two totally different.
Well, this is an example that, that Chris put together to give us something to use as a comparison.
I'm sure that we would. Research.
Yeah.
On this as well, so.
So, so there's two different kinds of splash pads, and when you look at, if you compare Belgium and you compare Jackson. Jackson's a recirculating one, so which means that they operate kind of in the same system that a pool operates, they have to have an actual pool operator and, and everything. It's a whole nother thing, right? This one would not be for something like that, it'd be more like Belgium's. And when we, when I looked at it originally, to just see what it would cost, to see if this was even something we could think about doing. This was for more of the concrete slab like Belgium has, um, and with a couple of water features on it. And it would be, you know, it'd just be a freshwater discharge. To have like storm sewer type thing.
It doesn't use that much water, even if it's a single use, and it's, it doesn't use all that much water.
So, so we got a couple of things right now, right? This is, there are initial action needed for this tonight at all, this is more or less. Getting this, this allocation is more or less a guideline, it doesn't, we're not spending any money right now. I would suggest, and this is. When this finally does come to fruition, I will just be a regular resident like everybody else. I would suggest that you reach out for community involvement in some sort of a committee level to run down, run to the ground. Some of the finer details and, and get more community involvement.
I agree with you, um, I got one more thing, like Belgium, now Mike Anthony put that in, they didn't, that didn't cost them nothing. Um, it does give a million gallon of water within a five-month period, Danny told me that today. Um, there's not gonna be any more dogs over in that park now. With this over there.
I'll just say we don't know where this is.
I, I understood, but I mean, you.
I'm, I'm not the one getting upset about it, I'm just, I'm just answering something or pointing out something to you.
But I mean. You had some. Downfall about over there because of the water, correct? And some other uh concerns with the water mains and stuff, right?
So Stony Creek is a low part. That part does flood. If we are discharging back into Stony Creek.
It's a treat to.
If. If the water level is above the pad. You're running everything that's in that creek back through the pad.
That's something we discussed a little bit today too, I mean, it, it wouldn't necessarily have to be over there. Is that one of the bigger concerns too, as to where it would be possibly?
No, I'm just against that, I mean, when I was a kid, I had sprinkler, you know?
I understand, and I think, you know, if I go a little bit further on this, I'm not, again, like Bill said, we don't have any action to take place tonight.
I just wanted to get a couple of things out there while.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just also gonna say, it's not just a splash pad, you know, that's, that's not the idea. The idea is you can put something somewhere, you can have, you know, maybe it turns into something else, more people come in from different municipalities, spend some time in our village. Maybe some people like our village, maybe they frequent our businesses, and we can add things on to it, like having food trucks there or something like that, right? So my big focus on something like this is to, let's give, again, you know, I know there's no action. But let's give the citizens something that could, they could possibly use, rather than having to go everywhere else to do something. And then also, if it's a, a way to better our village and, and possibly bring, bring in income and residents, isn't that a whole nother thing that we're looking for? Is more people on the tax.
Isn't that a whole nother thing that we're looking for is more people on the tax, you know, on the tax roll? I mean, I think that's something that we can. Uh, you know, get, get behind. That's me personally.
So what I'm hearing is that the consensus of the board more or less is that we should leave this powder money to do something along this line. Um, with it, for the, for the enjoyment of the village, rather than use it on something. That uh, needs to be fixed or, or something like that.
There's a timeline on the allocation of, of the money he's spent, but. At this point, I was.
Alright, is the board satisfied with that? We'll keep going along this line and see what we can come up with and whatnot.
That's good. Thanks, guys.
Okay, now, now, let's. We have a motion approved clerk Johnson and those treasurer deputies to attend municipal clerks and treasurer's institute respectively. On July seventeenth to twenty-first, so. I've got the four ninety-nine. Yep, I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Hold on, is this like hotel expenses for, this is all figuring in with, with all of our.
The training is virtually. Um, it was four hundred dollars, which what we did budget, we did not have the shop here. So technically there is, was not budgeted for two of us to go. However, it was a requirement of her appointment and she gave her some vacation that needs something here as well as going home. Um, but there is no hotels, there is no travel costs, all of that, right, right then. That did last year that we do it from our homes and now doing it from the house.
Just a question, cause that's the fastest we've ever approved anything like this.
So you're both gonna do it virtually from your homes?
Yes.
So Chris is gonna be here, man.
So just to be upfront with everybody, so this course, I believe, Melissa, you're on your second year, absolutely. So that's, I was gonna point to, it's, it's a three-year program total, um, and then it does split between the clerk and treasurer pass, so it looks out pretty well.
So you're gonna have a poll in each year and typing with your totals, right?
You got it.
Alright, any more questions?
It is not, right?
Yeah, any more questions? Okay, hearing none, I will call the board. All those in favor? Uh, we have any written correspondence? I didn't see any. Items for future consideration by the board. Then we are in order to adjourn, so.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
We are adjourned, thank you.